Okay, call the regular scheduled councillor meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Councillor Lo, or Administration Lo?
Thanks for the motion. Mayor Henderson, Members of the Council, I'd like to add under closed section, sixteen point one personnel under ATIA Section 29, and sixteen point two contract proposal under ATIA Section 29.
Okay, so entered any other additions to the agenda? Councillor Morrison?
I would like to add a budget adjustment. A review of proposals for strat plan.
Excuse me, Councillor Morrison, we're going to need to know where you're going to want to add this on the agenda. So you have to pick the section that you're going to put it under. So for instance, budget adjustment would be a finance item. Strat planning would be a new business item.
So budget adjustment under Section Three? Or Seven, Seven Three, sorry. And the strat plan and council orientation under new business. Under old business. I request a list of outstanding current motions. Under new business, I would request a financial brief by the matrix group.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat, you said strat plan and I'm missing the other item that you wanted included in that?
Council orientation.
As council orientation and strat plan are two separate items?
There are two proposals. I would like to review both proposals.
The strategic plan and council orientation?
By Bloom.
Oh, by Bloom. So that's your contract? Under closed session?
They need to be approved.
So council still needs to have that, oh, I understand what you're saying, so... Sorry, I'm trying to follow the order of what you're doing. So you asked for budget, budget?
Currently.
Current budget?
In the current budget.
Yep.
As I understand it, there needs to be a resolution to move funding from one area to another. I understand that the CAO bylaw allows.
Correct.
However, it doesn't make it right. So all I want to do is I want to move it.
Fair, and that's fine, but I'm just trying to follow the items that you want to add to the agenda. So you've got seven point three as budget?
And then I had new business.
A new business item which is strat plan and council orientation?
Correct.
Okay.
Under old business was just a listing feature for outstanding motions.
Okay, and then another item under new business?
Correct. So that's a financial request for a financial brief by matrix group.
Okay, so typically what, yeah, 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 I've got them all, I think. Seven point three is budget. We've got ten point...
Four.
Thank you. Ten point four is list is strat plan and council orientation. And then we have a nine point one and then a ten point five.
Correct.
Okay, so typically when council adds something to the agenda, that's what they're going to do. They're going to, they're going to list those numbers in there too, okay?
So be better prepared, Asher.
Um, well, you know what, I, you know what, you've got lots of learning to do, so, and this is an instructional evening, let's face it. Okay, so all good, just as long as I have everything, thank you.
Anything else to add to the agenda? Do I need a motion to accept the agenda?
As amended.
I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Councillor Longstaff?
I move to accept the agenda as amended.
Any questions? All those in favor? Carrie? Section, or Section Five, public hearing minutes.
I recognize that council wasn't here when these meetings were done. And so you have no idea of whether or not the meetings are actually, the minutes are actually correct. You have to assume that they are. It is part of business that the minutes have to be accepted in order to become official minutes. So you're just literally making that motion to accept those minutes.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the minutes as amended, or presented?
I move that we accept the minutes for both meetings, sorry.
They have to be separate motions?
Cool. I move that we accept the irregular minutes, meeting minutes of council for eight October as presented as this current council was not in attendance.
Any questions? All those in favor? Carrie? Can I get a six point two special meeting of council on October the fourteenth? Can I get a motion to approve those minutes? Councillor Longstaff?
I move to accept the minutes from the special meeting of council from October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, the motion's carried. Section seven, finance, seven point one, accounts paid as of October the twenty seventh, twenty twenty-five. Could I get a motion to accept the accounts paid as of October twenty seventh, twenty twenty-five?
Council's making that motion to accept as information as presented.
I move that we accept accounts paid as information as of twenty twenty-five, October twenty twenty-five, my apologies.
Any question? Any questions? Councillor Morrison?
Can I ask all of them at the same time?
Usually as long as there's no other member of council waiting, I, you know, it would dictate, common courtesy would dictate you ask one or two, and then if anybody else has any questions. Otherwise, if nobody does and the chair is okay with it, then...
First one, there's thirty-one K for a turbine pump by Seggo Canada, just curiosity what it's for.
Sorry, Councillor Morrison, can you just say what page it's on for me? First page?
First page, about three quarter of the way down, thirty-one thousand.
Okay, that was for the pump station. The turbine pumps needed repairs and maintenance done to it. Can you add anything else to that, Mr. Lo?
Councillor Morrison, that is for the pump house and the, that's one of our pumps in there that had to be repaired so we can continue to pump water to the town. There is a plan afoot to refurbish that. We're getting the, all the operations for the next, next year's capital budget to do the whole project.
And there was a, was there RFP for this, was there, what was the contracting process for Seggo Canada?
I would have to look into that and get back to you at the next meeting, we'll have to dig that out and get it for you.
That will require a motion to direct administration to do that.
Can I get a motion to direct administration?
You can't, you have a motion on the floor. So one motion at a time. My suggestion is you go through your AP listing and then at the end, you accept your accounts paid, the motion that's on the floor. Then if there's another motion to direct administration to come back to council with some information, then you just follow through with that other motion, okay?
So, okay. Three hundred and seventy-seven K for Rouland contracting. And this was, I'm asking, if this was the total for all road and sidewalk done, what, goodness, Ashley can't talk today. For all road and sidewalk work that was completed in the late summer and fall? If that's the total bill for that? And if it is not the total bill, what's still outstanding?
Good evening, Mayor Henderson and members of council. So that is for the sidewalk and paving of our, some of our streets within town this summer and fall. So there is a ten percent holdback currently, just to make sure everything is meeting the standards. That has not been paid out yet, but I believe this was our, our final bill from them for those repairs and maintenance that were done to our sidewalks and roadways. We have to still pay the holdback yet, it's still outstanding, they have not submitted that invoice yet for that holdback.
Nine point three K for Edmonton Metro Regional Economic Development shareholder contributions. Sorry, excuse my ignorance, just wondering what it is.
So that is Edmonton Global, I believe? I just have, is it Edmonton Metropolitan? Yep, so we have a yearly subscription contribution with them. So this is our second payment of the year to be a part of that organization. So we paid it, I think, the first one was in February, and this is our second payment to them. So it, the payments were exactly the same, nine thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-eight cents.
What does that, my ignorance is, what does that do, what's my whiffy? What does that do for me, what, what does it provide?
It's part of economic development to be a part of that organization, that group. It's Edmonton, I think, surrounding.
So Edmonton Global is a organization that looks to attract international business to the Edmonton region. And municipalities around the Edmonton region are members. And so you actually appointed, or you did appoint Mayor Henderson to be on that board. It is typically the mayors that are on that board. And there is a cost to being on that board, and right now, that's what that cost is, about twenty thousand dollars.
Councillor Longstaff?
Yeah, so forgive me, this is our first council meeting and a lot of this is news and I do have a lot of questions myself. First thing I had a question on was on page one with the Shaw Cable Systems. It has GCC internet Wi-Fi down twice for the same amounts. Invoice numbers, three, seven, two, four, and four, nine, four, five.
So with Shaw, they do all of our buildings for internet and Wi-Fi through. So with the GCC, it's such a large building, so we have upstairs and downstairs. So just, it's, it's too large just for one port or however they're called electronically, so, but that is why.
Okay, and with the phone, internet and all that stuff, on page one, page three, and page four, I've noticed we're paying four different companies for internet, phone, and Wi-Fi. So we've got Shaw, we've got Bell, we've got Thinktel.
So Shaw is our, our internet provider. The one on page three, the ones for approximately six thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. That's Shaw again, that's our fiber optic line that is running down the highway to go into our self-development that we are paying over the next three years, I believe that one is. Thinktel is our, two years ago, we went from landlines to voice over internet. So that's our phones within our buildings. And then what was the third one you had? Bell is our cell phone. So council, there's two on there, so one is seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, sorry, I'm just trying to find it here. And that was council, so that was council's cell phones and their iPads. Previous to this council, and those have now been canceled. So we'll have a partial payment, you'll see, going into the next month because it just was canceled, that subscription. And then some of our facility members have, we purchase their cell phones, they don't get a phone allowance, but we, the town, purchased those, those plans for them.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just ask one more question and somebody else can. On page five, there is replacement checks for Aquatec diving services. What, what are, where, is that the water pump thing?
So that was actually, they came out and went down into our reservoir. So they come out, I believe every four years to do that. And so what happened is the mailing address was incorrect on the check, so that's why we had to do the replacement. So we received their initial check back, we reissued it, so that's why it says replacement.
Okay, thank, I never thought of the reservoir, I'm just like, what are we diving for?
Councillor Morrison, do you have some more?
There's a Joe Johnson Equipment, ten K deposit on a twenty eighteen Freightliner.
Good evening, Mayor Henderson and members of council. So that is, previous council had put a down payment on a street sweeper. Our previous street, street sweeper is, it was no longer in a condition to run anymore. So it was sold, it was advertised and sold. So with the money that we got from the sale of our old street sweeper was fifteen thousand dollars, and we put it down then for the down payment of this. This is refundable. So we do not go forward when purchasing the street sweeper in twenty twenty-six on a capital line that you guys will see coming forward on budget, then we will get our money back on this deposit of the street sweeper. But currently now, the town does not have a street sweeper.
Thank you. There's five point three K for select engineering, and it just states for general engineering services, what's that?
So we only have so many line items that we're able to show you guys on the invoice description. So on that invoice, there's general engineering, but it was also concrete and asphalt. So there's three things that we're paying for. So general engineering can be anything from Public Works has called them to look at a sidewalk or what else would you call them for? Roadwork.
Sewer water.
Sewer water, so that could just be a general engineering cost, which is already built into our budget. Every department has a cost for general engineering in there. And then the concrete and asphalt, select engineering, were the ones who do that for us. And Rouland came out and did those repairs and maintenance, so then that's the cost too for, to have the engineer.
Is that just a standing offer with select, or like is that the only contract that you use? Do you put it out for tender, do you contract or, sorry?
Mayor Henderson, Members of council, Councillor Morrison, we have select engineers, our contract engineer. They do all of our engineering for us, for the town. We have been with them since they actually started, I guess Gibbons is number one on their list. And they do like any contract we good, so the, the concrete, they would put all the tenders out for the concrete and then come back and present their selection to us, and then we would say, okay. Any, any contract like that at all, select does all of that. They look after all our water sewer, they do anything we send to them.
Tender engineering, everything?
Everything to do with engineering, we go through select.
Is there a reason that we don't do any tendering on, on issues like that? If it, if it's such a broad, broad definition, I guess, of engineering, it's everything from sewer to concrete to asphalt. Is there any particular reason why we don't have a breakdown on why we aren't tendering those hope?
Councillor Burak, select does tender them out. They do all of that work, all of the, the tenders go out, they send them out to all the groups around. The tenders come in to select, they go through them, they bring one to us and say, we have all of these in, we suggest you go with this one. And that's how it's done. So they do all of the work for us, and then they, we select, but they propose the correct selection to us.
If I can add to, we don't have any engineers in-house, right? So anyone at this table would know exactly how much asphalt we would need and how much lay to put down and that type of thing. So that's why there are engineers, we don't have anyone in-house like the larger municipalities do to, to make sure the tendering process is done correctly and the proper procedures and everything are followed through in that process.
Yeah, no, I wasn't saying that, I was just, if it was such a broad spectrum, I didn't realize that that's how it was, it was done, I just looked for some clarity, thank you.
Any further questions?
So this one's, this one's a little bit silly, but I, I couldn't make the connection just by description. I think it's a, it's a silly amount, so I apologize, but one point five K, triple K stables dash vac truck as an explanation. It just didn't make sense to me, why are you paying, why are you paying a, a horse farm and a vac truck? It didn't, it wasn't good Cape Breton math.
Mayor Henderson, Members of council, Councillor Morrison, that is actually, we contracted out our vac truck to a driver, and that's the name of his company, is a triple K horse, whatever you said there. So it's just his company name. And they're actually, the son, his son actually drives a hydro vac truck itself, and he's just retired, and so we hired him temporarily to drive our vac truck to empty the sewer systems over in Heartland Station because we're short-staffed in Public Works.
Oh, you hired, you hired him as a person?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not as a horse, as a person.
Paquette Construction, and the description is PW mezzanine floor and handrail. So I'm, PW, I'm assuming is Public Works, and, and this was just a repair within a building?
Good evening, Mayor Henderson and members of council. So yeah, so with our health and safety, Bram does our inspections for us at all our different facilities. So when inspecting the public workshop, we have a mezzanine that is used pretty much for storage of road signs and different things. So when doing that, the floor is very unstable. It is not safe for our employees to go up there, so this is repairs to get that up to standard, so and then it will be usable by the staff. Yeah, we try and make it as best as we can, but we only have so many characters that we can fit in that description, so PW is Public Works.
I'm all done, I promise.
Councillor St Germain?
I just have a question. There's a Government of Alberta Pumper Operator Exam, NFPA, so is that for the horse guy?
Good evening, Mayor Henderson and members of council. So no, that's our fire department. So they were on training courses for the pumper truck, so that, that is what that is for. Thank you.
Councillor Curry?
At the bottom of page one here, the prime to finish for fourteen thousand seven hundred, I'm just curious what that was.
Again, that was a replacement check, Councillor Curry, so I, I don't have exactly what that was for. I believe it was the painting, maintenance that was done at the arena or the curling rink at the outside of the building. If you look at the curling rink, the north end of it, that faces the cultural center, got redone because that cinder block, they've tried painting it a number of times over the years and it kept on peeling. So what they did was put the tin on it, and then they've painted that tin. So I believe what, that's what that, that cost is for, again, it was a replacement check.
Thank you.
Any further questions? So is it possible to get the motion read back?
Council is just accepting the accounts paid as, as at October twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five as information as presented.
All those in favor? Opposed, seeing none, motion's carried. Seven point two, franchise fee for this Alberta.
I just had a question, we were going to direct coun, or direct administration to follow up on some of those items? So could I make a motion for administration to follow up? How detailed do I have to be?
That was your motion, wasn't it?
Okay, I wrote them down. So there was the procurement process for Seggo Canada Inc. Was one of the follow-up items? Sorry? And Rouland contracting? You, or can I make them together or no?
I just need clarification on exactly what it was for Rouland, so I know what to go back on. I know you asked if it was the full payment.
Not, not the full payment, I want to know what the contracting process, did it go to tender?
Yeah, so that, again, that was done through select engineering, and they put out the tendering process. I forget if they came back with five different tenders on that, and then it was selected that way. So there was a tendering process done on it, select did it, they got them back, and then the, the selection.
Okay, so then it's just for Seggo one more time?
And wasn't there, like with the replacement check, to see exactly what it was for, or, or did you confirm that? The replacement check for Prime Two Finish Limited, that's confirmed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So just the one, just the one motion then, and that is?
To come back about the procurement process for Seggo Canada Inc., right? For thirty-one, zero, zero, nine, zero.
Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, seven point two, franchise fee for this Alberta.
Good evening, Mayor Henderson and members of council. The purpose of this report is to respectfully request that council considers the Fortis Alberta franchise fee that it collects each year on the town's behalf. The current Fortis Alberta franchise fee is set at ten percent. However, this fee can be adjusted annually up to a cap of twenty percent. Administration would like to point out the following fees that were collected in the last couple of years. In two thousand twenty-one, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. Two thousand twenty-two, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents. Two thousand twenty-three, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-three cents. Two thousand twenty-four, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. To the end of September twenty twenty-five, the town has already received one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents with an estimation that we should collect one hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-two cents in revenues by the end of twenty twenty-five. The twenty twenty-six franchise fee is estimated to be two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, sorry, two hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. To increase from ten percent to the maximum twenty percent, resolve an additional two hundred and sixteen thousand, seventy-seven dollars based on the forecasting as indicated above. The resulting impact to the customer's annual billing is approximately one hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents per year as is required to be advertised to residents. Other rates being charged in our areas follows, Bonacord nineteen percent, Redwater ten percent, Beaumont seventeen point two five percent, Moretonville twenty percent, Gibbons ten percent, Westlock sixteen point two five percent, Legale twenty percent, St. Albert fifteen percent, Spruce Grove twenty percent. Recommendation for action, administration would like to respectfully request that council consider the following recommendation, that council maintains the Fortis franchise fee at ten percent for twenty twenty-six. Thank you.
Could I get a motion indicating such? Councillor Longstaff?
I'd like to make a motion that we maintain the franchise, Fortis franchise fee at ten percent for twenty twenty-six.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing none, all those in favor? None opposed, motions carried. 7.3 Budget Adjustment. Councillor Morrison?
It's my understanding that there has been identified a variance within general expenses within the, within the operating budget for 2025 that the CAO wanted to move from general to, sorry, council legislation and was doing that under the CAO bylaw. My suggestion is there should be a resolution of council for the $40,000 that you want to move from general specifically to council and legislative expense.
Mayor Henderson, members of council, councillor Morrison. In the CAO bylaw, the, the town has a budget of X. Whatever X is, it will use a million dollars, it's an easy figure. In there, the CAO has the authority to stay within that budget and move 10% of funds from one to another without council's approval. So that's what was done, was funds were moved around to ensure that we had the funds available out of another account to that within, staying within the general budget.
I appreciate that. However, it actually wasn't moved on the budget that was presented, the detailed budget. So it was still sitting in general. It wasn't moved over and there wasn't a line item that was created under council and legislation. So three proposals were brought forth, but only one brought forth to council for the $15,000. So it doesn't make sense to me why one proposal was brought to council and two proposals were not brought to council, but they were, you know, as part of the funding of your 10% that you can, you can move around from one thing to another because within the bylaw. So I just, it doesn't make sense to me why we're, why we're either not going to move the money or why we're not putting in and looking at all of the proposals and then council approving the proposals for the spending.
Councillor Morrison, what we moved that money for was to request that council approve a headhunter to find a CAO. So that was new funds kind of available for a new task to headhunt, to find a CAO. The rest was for training and orientation for council. Do I think I have that right? Just confirming with.
Yeah, so I believe the motion was for, to council to, to hire the, the headhunter for the new CAO position. Was the motion though for, for the funds to be available too? I'd have to go back and see what that motion originally was. Or was it just to hire for, for that position?
It was to hire the CAO and then we relocated funds for strategic planning and orientation.
But shouldn't the strategic planning and orientation, like I believe that orientation may have been there, but the strategic planning was not?
Use your mic, please councillor Morrison, thank you.
Where my problem is, is it's like being half-pregnant. You know, there were three proposals put forth. You didn't have any of those, the funding proposed within that budget. So you've got to move the money from one place to the other. It's not a problem. It's just the transparency should be, okay, we've got to move X dollars from here to here. And when we move it here, we're going to do this. And one proposal for one amount was brought forth to council and that previous council approved it. The other two proposals were not brought to council, but all of the money had to be moved in order to fulfill all three. So I'm, I don't understand why there's, there's like the pushback to, why don't we not just by resolution move $40,000 in a budget line over into the council and legislative program? And then there's complete transparency there and then approve all three proposals. It seems very simple to me, but maybe I'm missing something. It's just very transparent, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I would have to agree with you councillor Morrison. So I think if I remember back, it's just that one part was coming forward to council. Going forward, we're following the CAO's procedural bylaw or bylaw and doing so by what we did. But again, that's council, I think now can come back with that bylaw and make that amendment then. But I don't see us going forward having no issues being more transparent. But we're following, I think, the proper procedures by the CAO in moving that funds. And that motion was at that time just for that headhunter of $15,000. That, the motion that brought forward to council the previously, right?
Understood, and I totally appreciate that. Really just looking to clean it up right now. So let's make a resolution, move the money in the budget and not use the bylaw. Have council agree to move the funding and then to approve the proposals. That's all, just clean it up.
So does council have a motion coming forward then for something to that effect? And just so I can clarify, is that also what's being, going to be discussed down on 10-4? Which is strategic planning and orientation?
So do you want it all involved into one or you don't?
Well, council has made the additions to the agenda. I can't do anything. So you either accept this as an information portion. You've had a discussion with administration, it's now an information portion. However, as I'm looking at this, you probably want to move 10-4 to 10-3 and 10-3 to 10-4. Because 10-3 currently on the agenda is to set the time for the orientation. So in the order of things, you can't set time for an orientation that you've, that you want to make a motion to approve first. So council can't make a motion for orientation when you're, when you're telling administration that you want to make a motion first to approve the money moving for the orientation? So my suggestions, my suggestion. How about we have a motion right now to accept this as information? And at the same time, you make a motion to move 10-3, 10-3 down to 10-4 and 10-4 into 10-3. So we just reverse those orders and we'll follow the order of things, okay?
I make a motion to what she said.
That council makes a motion to accept the budget adjustment as information and you're going to deal with the other portion of it down below, right? And then you'll need a separate motion to move 10-3 to 10-4, 10-4 to 10-3.
I'll make that motion.
Any questions? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
So now?
Any questions on that motion? All those in favor? Seeing no opposed, motions carried. Eight. Section eight appointments. Seeing none. Nine, old business, 9.1. List of standing motions. Outstanding motions. Councillor Morrison?
I move that administration provides new council with a list of all outstanding motions or all motions that are currently outstanding for review.
Any questions? Councillor St Germain?
Can I ask? I'm just wondering if there's a date attached to that, like if we have a, an end date, like that is to be back, brought back by?
I'm going to, well, then, yeah, let's make sure we've got that before the next meeting so that we can review.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Okay, new business, 10.1 Remembrance Day Service at Landing, at Gibbons and Landing Trail School.
Mayor Henderson, members of council. The purpose of this report is to respectfully request that council give consideration to the Remembrance Day services at Landing Trail and Gibbons School. The options available by council include the following. The council advised administration as to who will be attending the Remembrance Day services at Landing Trail and Gibbons School. Two, the council advised administration how it would like to proceed. Recommended action, that, that council advised administration who will be attending Remembrance Day services at Landing Trail and Gibbons School.
Can I get a, excuse me, can I get a motion indicating such?
I move that, I move that, oh my goodness, I'm tongue-tied. I so move that council will attend Remembrance Day services at Landing Trails and Gibbons School with discussion of members to attend.
Question?
Questions, who wants to attend? Councillor Barak?
I'll join Daryl. I'll join councillor Barak.
Is their ability to do both schools, are they happening at the same time is my question?
No, you'll see on the motion that they are attending at nine and 11 and council doesn't have to send just one. It's certainly a good show to send multiple members if you'd like to the public. And their kids are cute when they put their wreaths down, so.
Very happy to attend.
Okay, so councillor Morrison, councillor Curry and councillor Barak will attend? All those in favor? Motion's carried. 10.2 Remembrance Day Service at Bonacord.
Mayor Henderson, members of council. The purpose of this report is to respectfully request that council give consideration to the Remembrance Day services at the town of Bonacord. Background on this, administration has received an email from the town of Bonacord inviting members of council to attend the Remembrance Day services and lay a wreath on behalf of the town of Gibbons. Recommended for action, administration would like to respectfully request that council consider the following recommendation. The council advised administration as to who will be attending the Remembrance Day services in Bonacord on behalf of the town of Gibbons.
Can I get a motion, councillor Longstaff?
I move that council sends representatives to the Bonacord Remembrance Day services for the schools.
Okay, any questions or, I guess, be volunteers to attend?
I'll volunteer and.
Councillor Longstaff and councillor St Germain will attend Bonacord.
Just as a reminder, this is Bonacord Services, not at Bonacord School. So this will be taking place on Remembrance Day.
Sorry, I can't.
Backsies.
Sorry.
I kind of thought that. So.
So you can make a friendly amendment to your motion that, and councillor St Germain has offered to go. So you can make the motion that councillor St Germain attend Bonacord services on behalf of the town of Gibbons.
I'd like to amend my motion that councillor St Germain attend the Remembrance Day services in Bonacord.
All those in favor? Motion's carried. 10.3 Strat Plan. Councillor Morrison?
I move that we accept the proposal by Bloom for the Strat Plan. And move.
They could be Strat Plan and orientation?
Strat Plan and orientation and move the funding at the same time? Perfect.
The funds from?
$40,000 from general expense to council and legislative expense.
Do we have any ques, any questions? All those in favor? None opposed, motions carried. 10.4 Orientation Training Bloom. Tim Dremel?
This time we're just looking for council to schedule a couple of dates, a day and a half. Tim, I think they put you in, in the closed session item. Yes, that's correct.
I would, for transparency, I would like a briefing so that our citizens know what we're doing.
My name is Tim Dehamel. Nice to meet you again. I am the president of a company called Bloom Centre for Municipal Education. Just a little bit of background for yourselves and your public. We've been doing business for about eight years and I've been in the municipal business for about 30 years, though I know I look a lot younger than that, but I'm kidding, of course. We are the official education provider for the Canadian Association of Government Finance Officers. Our clients range from cities like the city of Vancouver, Coquitlam, Edmonton, Regina and the town of Redwater, the town of Bonacord. And we have a lot of regional clients in the area. From the perspective of council orientations, we have a long history of providing council orientations and elected official education. And one of the things that is mandatory for elected officials under the municipal legislation in Alberta is that you have two components of education that are required. In the first, basically, seven, eight days of your, of your being an elected official and prior to the organizational meeting, you have to be compliant with, with legislation, which means you have to have training in municipal structure, the municipal role, roles of council, the councillor and the mayor and the roles of, of the CAO. And so that is mandatory training that we provided for you on Saturday. And so again, you had to have that prior to this meeting for you to be able to be legal, to have your signing authority completed and your org meeting completed. The second component of the training includes quite a bit of information, actually. And I just finished an orientation today for 35 elected officials on this subject. And it will encompass things like finance, budget, reporting. It will also cover things like good governance and how to run a council meeting properly. It will talk about conflict and basically mediation when you have challenges as a council. It will also speak to public engagement and how to connect with your public in, in a meaningful and a productive way. And then we'll talk a little bit about strategic planning. And so those are the key things that essentially make up the agenda that municipal fares. Again, the provincial body that legislates basically the orientations that covers off, excuse me, basically the agenda that's required for you to be compliant. And just for, again, the public's awareness and yours as council, that has to be completed within the first 90 days of your time on council. So you have basically three months to complete that. One of the things I think is very important to note about the council orientations is that there is, again, provincial training that is available. And that, that was conducted today in Fort Saskatchewan. So many municipal, municipalities go to general training. And then other municipalities like to have a more kind of focused training that is specific to them. And so I've been secured by no less than about a dozen municipalities to do the kind of training that you are talking about now. And again, I personally think it provides a lot of value when you have training that's specific to you. It allows you to ask questions as a council. The training is tailor-made to your current situation. Again, it provides an ability for a bit of team building with council. And so it's kind of, instead of being in an audience with, you know, 100 or 150 other elected officials, it's just specific to you and your situation. And so one of the things that my firm does is a significant amount of homework before we provide the orientations. And it's really, in a sense, a tailor-made orientation to your situation. And so we've been asked to provide a proposal in relationship to that orientation and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. And so we've been asked to provide a proposal in relationship to that orientation, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Thank you. Ten point five, briefing by Matrix.
No, 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 you have no motion on the floor yet, so you have not set any dates for this additional training that's required. So that is, you want to have a discussion on that.
Okay, could I get a motion to set a date for the remainder of the orientation training?
Would we not have to check schedules, so could we just say that we would discuss it further? Can we do that? That we, we would be within the ninety days and we will arrange a date?
Yeah, so you can make a motion that council check their schedules and get back to administration with a date or two. You probably want two, because I understand Tim says he needs about another twelve hours with you guys, so you want to probably set two dates. And then we can advise Tim on what those dates are and if that coincides with his schedule.
Okay, so.
So the motion would be that council advise, that council advise administration after checking schedules what the dates will be.
Yes. Can we do that?
Any question, any questions on that motion? Did you understand it down there? Counselor Longstaff?
With this, if we're going to pick a couple of dates, we're not having another council meeting until the end of November? Because the.
This is training outside of your council meeting, so.
We're forced to come up with dates, we're not supposed to do it in a meeting, or can we just do it?
You can all look at your schedule and just email me and say these dates would be preferable, right? And then we'll, from there, take the consensus of everybody's and then propose those dates out to Tim. So I understand the issue is you want to check your schedules. You have something on here on the table, so your motion is you're going to check your schedules, and then you're going to advise administration of, of dates of availability. And then from there, administration will coordinate that with Tim.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you want to discuss it here now.
I was just wondering if Tim's being booked up, would it not be better he give us available dates and then we check our schedules and see which ones it works, it'd probably be easier than seven.
I'll provide your administration with some, some proposal, proposed dates, and we will accommodate, you know, your time, we'll find something.
So we'll need to amend the motion to.
Yeah, now your motion is going to be just to accept that as information.
We're going to accept that and make a motion to accept this information?
Any further questions? All those in favor? Motion carried?
I'm busy December twenty-fifth, just so you know.
Article eleven, bylaw policies, I see there's.
Nope, you've got to go to ten point five now.
Is there ten point, oh yeah, ten point five, briefing by Matrix. Counselor Morrison?
I move that we request Matrix to provide a financial briefing to council. Preferably within the next month.
So you're direct, you're directing administration to get in contact with that, and by financial briefing, what is it so that administration knows exactly what they're asking Matrix Group for?
I'd like to, sorry, okay, so I'm proposing that we direct administration to request Matrix Group to give us an overview of the 2024 audit and the auditor's report in particular.
From 2024?
Correct. I'm in five, yes.
Any questions?
Sorry, that was 2025 or 2024?
Twenty-four. We're in twenty-five, I have to set myself again.
So the only question I have, it may be difficult to get them out at night, come to a meeting, so they'll, chances are there'll have to be a special meeting in order to get them here during the day if they are unable to attend at night. So that's something we can, administration, when they can, reach out to them and find out if they can come, when they can come. No further questions?
Just to be clear, in all honesty, it's, it's the in-camera session that happens with the auditor after. I, I was, I watched the presentation that was given to council. It was, it's more for the auditor's report in camera.
Council recognizes that will still be an in-camera presentation, right? Okay.
No further questions? All those in favor? Motion's carried? Section eleven, bylaws and policies, seeing nothing in the agenda. Section twelve, staff reports. Twelve point one, administrative reports, this is in camera?
No. Mayor Henderson, members of council, we'll start with community services, Stephanie?
Mayor Henderson, members of council, so we've got, our next big event is our hometown weekend, which is from the November twenty-first to twenty-third. Our seniors' almost Christmas dinner is sold out. We have our skating with Santa at the arena, a lot of museum activities, our parade of lights, and a youth gaming night, as well as there's a Christmas craft market and farmer's market on the twenty-third, and cookies and crafts with the Gibbons Library on the twenty-third as well. And then just a reminder to keep watching our newsletter, all of our groups put events on there, as well as our town events, and there's a lot coming up in November. In finance, we've just been working on, on budgets mostly.
Mayor Henderson, members of council, so I got Public Works, Public Works is finishing off, they got three hydrants going in. It's for fire coverage around town, these were planned for the last three years. We just moved one, instead of putting it right next to the fire hall where one was across the street, we moved it down to the end of the block. It gives us more coverage in that one area. One by Motor Toys, and one, if you went straight through Motor Toys on the next street over, Fiftieth Street, they're putting one there. Public Works are, uh, just winterizing everything now, getting the equipment ready, and just carrying on and getting ready for winter. Under Fire, we have twenty-six members on Fire, and reports to date, we respond to in town. We have a total of a hundred and fifty-one calls. Make sure I got it right, one. We respond out in County, in Sturgeon County, we have a hundred and eighty calls. And we're first up for structure fires in Morneville, and we have four calls there. So when Morneville gets a structure fire call, we're automatically dispatched to Morneville. And just, I just want to brief on the town calls a little, just so you see what we do. Year-to-date medical calls, we have a hundred medical calls. We are normally on scene before AHS forty-six percent of the time. So if the ambulance is out of town, we are automatically dispatched for all medical calls. Three structure fires in town, one commercial, garage on fire at the garbage fire, garbage can fire at the Gibbons School, residential kitchen fire, the condo in town, and a residential trailer in Long Riders Campground. We are on scene from time of dispatch, the average about seven minutes and forty seconds. So at three AM in the morning when we're in bed and the tones go off, we're out of bed, to the hall, and on scene within seven minutes and forty seconds with a crew. So that's just your, your fire department in town. And in the county, we do various calls, motor vehicle accidents, and our boundaries on the highway here for the new, uh, new grads. We had about two or three accidents along this highway already. So we go from about the train trestle up to about five sixty is still our highway, on provincial highway. And then for CAO, um, we are working on budget and, uh, meeting today with orientation, and I will be sending out an email to you to set up a, a staff orientation. So I'll take you around town and show you where everything and what everything is. So familiarize you, and once that's done, we'll set up other meetings with our engineer rep and municipal planning services. So you'll get the whole gommet of everything.
Can I get a motion to accept this administration's report as information?
I'll make that motion.
Any questions? All those in favor? Carried? Section thirteen, committee reports, since we're all new, there is none. Section fourteen corresponds, it's fourteen point one, Alberta Utilities Commission, Green Light Electricity Center.
That's just for you to read.
Oh, okay. And we accept that as information?
With a motion.
Oh, I need a motion to accept that as information?
I'll make a motion to accept the Alberta Utilities Commission letter as information.
Any questions?
Was there a response made? There was a request for a response if you wanted to participate by like the seventeenth of October or something like that. Is there, is there a requirement or, like, just to, to try to get a grasp of understanding as to what is happening with?
Yeah, so that would be the same thing as, like, almost like a public hearing sort of idea, so if you were affected, then you could respond to that. This is more for just council's information.
Perfect, thank you.
No further questions? All those in favor? Motion's carried? Notice of motions? None? Sixteen point.
Okay, so that, pause, that is your closed session.
It's closed session, yes.
So what you need to do is you need to make a motion to go into closed session specifically stating that you're going into closed session under section twenty-nine of the Access to Information Act for personnel and for contract proposal. So that has to be a specific motion stating the, stating the reason you're going in, which is the agenda items, and what portion of the Access to Information Act that allows you to go in there. Then you're going to pause so that everybody can clear the room. I can turn off the microphones, and we can set our speaker out there so that it remains a closed session portion, okay? Did you get all that?
There was a lot of it.
There was. First, first thing you're going to do is you're going to make a motion to go into closed session under section twenty-nine of the Access to Information Act for personnel and contract proposal.
Can I get a motion for that? Counselor Longstaff?
I move the, a motion that we move to closed session under section twenty-nine of the Access to Information Act regarding personnel and contract proposals.
All those in favor? Carried?
Uh, Councilor Longstaff?
I'd like to make a motion that Council Direct Administration to continue as discussed.
Any questions? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Councilor Longstaff?
I'd like to make a motion that Council accept the Bloom CME contract as presented.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, motion's carried. I have to swear in Mr. Barak.
Does that have to be done in the middle of the session?
Okay.
It just has to be done.
Okay. I, with no further business, I declare the meeting closed or adjourned.